Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you all. I first of all wanted to just start out by thanking everyone who's here this evening and who's watching virtually or listening virtually. As a mom, as a grandma, as a school leader, our first and foremost is always safety. Before academics, before anything we do is safety for our children. So I truly, truly am grateful that you're all here. We're going to be presenting to you a lot of information this evening. Oh, is the mic, it keeps creeping down. It's not behaving. Hold on, let me see if I bend it this way. Okay, thank you. But it's all about keeping our kids safe, and that's why we're here tonight. And I have a packet of all of the emails that have been sent to me over the past week. I've read them all thoroughly, and what I did is I really took copious notes on what people had asked, what people were concerned about, where there seemed to be some gaps of information that we need to close for you. So that's what we're going, that is the purpose of this meeting tonight, is to answer all the questions that came forward because I view it as if one person is asking me, that probably means that there are several other people that are thinking the same thing. Perhaps they didn't email me, perhaps they reached out to the school board or some of our colleagues up here, our school leaders, or perhaps teachers, et cetera. So we just want to know that we are constantly listening to your concerns. And what we're going to do, just to start ourselves out, is I want you to know the unbelievable leadership team that we have here at the Locust Valley School District. I'm going to start with Dr. Sampedino here. I'm going to ask each administrator to state their name and their title so you know who they are and probably a little bit about their roles and responsibilities to our school district.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Janine Sampedino. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction here in Locust Valley. Thank you so much for coming. What else did you want me to say?
That's it.
Hi, I'm Eric Nakotavichis. I'm the Director of Facilities and Security for the district.
Hi, I'm Karen Horashevsky. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business.
I'm Amri Bonaspeina. I'm the Coordinator of Instructional Technology and the Fine Applied Arts.
I'm Ken Packard. I'm the Executive Director of Administrative Operations and Technology.
Good evening, I'm Mike Leggerfo, the Middle School Assistant Principal.
Good evening, Michael Sistaro, Building Principal, Locust Valley Middle School.
Good evening, Cheryl Whiting, Coordinator of Special Education for the district.
Kimberly Farina, Coordinator of Math and Science.
Michelle Villa, Executive Director for Human Resources.
Hi, I'm Joseph Fanea. I'm the Coordinator of History, English, and Business.
Good evening, I'm Danielle Casi, the Director of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lisa Chernetsky. I'm the Director of Guidance, Advanced Studies, and Research.
Good evening, I'm Effi Kivellus, the Director of People Personnel Services.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Amy Watson. I'm one of the Assistant Principals of the high school who supervises World Language and ENL as well.
Patrick DiClemmini, High School Principal.
Jennifer Massa, I'm the Assistant Principal at Locust Valley High School.
Kurt Simon, Principal of A. MacArthur Primary.
Hi, everyone. Scott McElhenney, Principal of Bayville Intermediate School.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ross Cohen, Principal at Bayville Primary.
Good evening, Kathleen Riley, Principal of Locust Valley Intermediate, grades three, four, and five.
So first and foremost, I want to thank the leaders that are here with you today. And all of the knowledge that we're going to share with you tonight is "we." So all of us work together, and you're going to see how we work together, to provide our students with the most safe and secure environment that we possibly can. Sending us, whether it be Facebook, TikTok pages, emails that you sent to our building leadership, we stay on top of what's happening in our schools. See something, say something. We rely on our families in this room and that are watching tonight for information that you may hear in the community. We don't always hear it first, and many times we hear it directly from the people sitting here with us. So we appreciate that, and we hope that you continue. We're going to be reviewing the district-wide school safety plan. We're going to be looking at it from an elementary perspective, a middle school perspective, and a high school perspective. We're going to look at how we face challenging and sometimes life-threatening situations. We're going to discuss the mandates for the New York State Education Department and how we actually actualize those mandates from the State Education Department. And I know that all of us have some predisposed or mental models about how we feel about safety in our schools, how we think things should be. And I just ask that during this time period when we're presenting to you, that you really, truly actively listen, take notes. You may have questions that you have tomorrow, and you may want to reach out to one of the leaders sitting in front of you, like a building leader, because you still have some more questions. We're here to answer that. We want you to know that we try every day to do our best here because we care about our students and we care about our community. We will not be answering questions during our presentation because we have a lot of information to share. We believe that our parents are partners, and we do have opportunities that will be addressed this evening that you can become involved in throughout the school year. We also did an analytics test because it was important for me to share this with all of you. We do have some family members that have opted out on email or text messages. So please make sure that you check your settings. If you didn't receive information, and we did have several people call our office, what we did notice through running analytics is that people had perhaps just accidentally blocked the school district. We want to be able to provide you with updated information, but we do need you to check the information on e-school so we can contact you. These are some of our non-negotiables. Parents were asking us, what are our non-negotiables? One of them is we have a district-wide safety committee, which we're going to talk about a little bit later. We have a safety plan for each school. We have safety plans that are shared with our faculty members, teachers, custodians, food service personnel, teaching assistants, et cetera. We have mental health training for teachers, teaching assistants, and our administration. We have so many drills per year, and this is according to the New York State law, which we have to file for all of these and demonstrate that we did do them. We've got response teams in each building. We also have zero tolerance for behaviors that jeopardize the safety of others. Our code of conduct is now being worked on by our Board of Education as well as just about all the administrators that you see before you because, again, this is a group effort. Discipline and confidentiality, some of the parents reached out to me. We can't talk about anyone's children. We can't talk about your children to anyone. We can never describe what happens in the aftermath. We just can't. So please understand, these are laws that protect all of our children. We can't obviously give anyone your child's information. As you know, we've got privacy laws. So I just wanted to make note of that. And I think above all, we're a community here, and we're a beautiful community here. And the vision statement that we have up in our Board of Education room as well as all throughout our school buildings is to educate the whole child and inspire everyone for a passion for lifelong learning, to provide a safe and nurturing environment dedicated to academic excellence and the development of a student's autonomy, accountability, and commitment to community. We also pledge that same vision, that we are committed to our community and to our students. This is taken directly out of our school district-wide safety plan. Just so all of you are aware, this is updated on our website, and I'm going to be speaking a little bit about the process. But I want you to understand, as I stand here before you as the superintendent, I am the Chief Emergency Officer. I coordinate communication between school staff and law enforcement and first responders. Clearly, I'm working with all the individuals to my right, your left. Assistance in the selection of security-related technology and procedures, you're going to hear a lot about this this evening. Coordination of safety, security, and emergency training for all of our school staff. Assistance in required evacuation and lockdown drills, completion is required by law, as you know. And all of our school staff understands that district-wide safety plan. So all of our teachers are very aware of what to do when whatever happens. And then assurance that the school-wide safety plan and building-level emergency response plans are completed, reviewed, and annually and updated as needed. So we can go into these emergency plans, and the reason that I mention this, and many times we update them throughout the year. And most of that has to do with upgrades that we've made throughout the year or technology, as you're going to see as we move forward. This is also on our website, enclosed in our school-wide safety plan. And I just want you, I know this is a very cumbersome chart, and the reason that I'm showing you this is because this is really what goes into our safety-wide plan. It is not just one little line from one person to the next. It takes a lot of individuals to come together to develop a plan. I also want you to notice, kind of in the middle of the page to your right, it says "public and private." And that's important. So we are allowed to put on our website public information. But there is private information that the individuals up here have solely, and that's for the safety and security of our school buildings because, of course, we don't want some of our information to get out because that's how we know that that information is private. We don't want it on the internet. Our district-wide safety team members for the 24-25 school year obviously is composed of myself, our Director of Facilities and Security. We've got Board of Education trustees, building principals, and administrators. You'll sometimes hear the term "POP officers," that stands for Problem-Oriented Police, Homeland Security, local fire departments, teachers, transportation personnel, lead nurses, and of course, our parents. So every year we go through this. The plan has to be updated by law, but it's also just great practice because it gives us an opportunity to see where we want to enhance our practices. It's always posted on our website, and over this summer, every year, we open it up for public comment. So our district-wide safety plan was open for comment this summer for 30 days. It was adopted by the Board of Education this past August 13th. Then what I do as your superintendent is all of these administrators have a very, very lengthy document that needs to be submitted to the New York State Education Department. I review it, and then I post it up to the New York State Education Department. It must be up there by October 1st. Ours is already there. I did it about two weeks ago, and that was with the help of all the individuals up front. If you're looking for it, because some people have asked me, where can they find it? Please note it's under the Facilities tab. So if you go to the Facilities Department on the website, there's a tab there that indicates the district-wide plan. And then all plans are submitted to the Nassau County Police Department. Currently, this is our district-wide school safety team. As you can see, there's many individuals here. I think what's important to note is that there's police officers, school administrators. We've got technology, people in technology, the teachers, Union President Romi Bennett. We have several teachers and several parents. This team meets routinely. I put the dates up, so our first meeting is October 9th, December 18th, February 26th, and May 14th. That's the minimum that we hold. If we see that there's a reason to have another meeting, we just call one. These meetings are at 3:15 and they're virtual. People can listen in. They just can't participate unless they're on the school safety team. But I do want you to notice, and I thought I might have seen some of these individuals here, but Meredith Watcher and Kevin Tomlinson are our parents, so feel free to reach out to them. And we take copious notes at those meetings, and we also listen to each other. What are areas that we can improve in? This is, again, kind of our way of continuously improving our work. So we work with other school districts and our local authorities. This is a continuous learning process. I'm not sure how many of you are aware today, but there was a tremendous amount of threats made to school districts in Long Island, Suffolk County, and Nassau from bomb threats to social media posts of shootings. The superintendents all reach out to each other and have conversations. We meet frequently, which I will describe to you more. But please know that this is not a one-and-done. This is a continuation. So you'll see on the left-hand side where it talks about the district-wide safety team, which leads into the plan. But if you notice on the right-hand side, which is really important for you as parents, so yes, we have a building-level emergency response team. You'll see that we designate this response team, but more importantly, the post-incident response team. So this is where we reflect upon what happened and what we need to do in the future. So we're continuously learning from each other. When the administrators, when we meet, which is at least monthly, if not every other week, and if it's something that's, of course, of great concern, we talk about what we learned from each other, what we learned from this incident. So I just want you to have, again, a big picture of this. I'm now going to ask our elementary leaders to present specifically on their philosophy, their plan, and I'll let them take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Turnow. So at the elementary level, as in all levels, the safety of our students is our top priority. You know, whether it is the physical safety or their feeling safe in their learning environment so that they are available to learn, it's extremely important that they feel that way. And our teachers and our staff do an incredible job at making them feel this way each and every day. You know, at our level, routines are critical so that everyone knows what to do as they guide students through whatever that process, whatever that drill in case of an emergency is. But our children need those routines, and so part of our practice, day in and day out, week in and week out, month in and month out, is making sure that we have these routines down for our students who we begin with pre-K at AMP and BP. So whether we're running evacuation drills with our students or we're running a reunification drill, which would actually mean taking these young students, extending really like a fire drill and moving them to another building, or running one of our regular lockdown drills with our staff with law enforcement present to give us feedback, it's absolutely critical that everyone in the building is a part of this process. And all of our staff members, no matter who they are, whether they're on our safety team or not, participates in these drills so they can help to be leaders of students. And our goal in doing this work is that it is developmentally appropriate. It's important to understand that the learners in our schools, they are young, but by the same token, these drills are critical to their safety and keeping our building safe. So that is our focus every time we run one of our drills and we work with our staff and with our community.
Thank you, Kurt. We work with our staff on a regular basis to ensure a full understanding of our responsibilities. We also constantly monitor and refine procedures through faculty meetings, through grade-level meetings, and through our building safety teams. We want our students to know that we have plans in place if there is an emergency, just like we do at home. An example that I like to give, and I actually got the idea from the local Bayville Fire Department, is that family plan in case of a fire. Like, you need to know what to do if there's a fire. You need to know where to go. You need to know, if you're separated from anybody in the family, where are we going to meet? So that's critical for us and our staff to make sure that our kids know that we practice these in case of an emergency.
Thank you. So today, you know, marked the fifth day of the 24-25 school year, and what we recognize is that for some of our primary students and for some of our primary families, it was the fifth day of school period. Our young students are really just starting out on the road to being self-managers, to understanding and regulating their emotions and navigating the social experience that is a school day. I think we're privileged that the intimate size and community-oriented nature of our buildings naturally allows us to bring diverse teams together, partners in the building to support children, to monitor and help them monitor and manage their own behaviors, to help children avert and calm crises. It can be challenging to find the language to use with very It can be challenging to find the language to use with very young children to help them understand what they're feeling, whether it's an external crisis or whether they're feeling what we call "big feelings." And sometimes when I sit with kids, we use the imagery and language of waters. And sometimes you feel those waves crashing in those turbulent waters internally. And what can we do to help them calm those seas and get back to a cool, comfortable, safe place emotionally? You're going to hear from some of our partners in a little bit about the professionals in the building outside of some of, in the building outside of some of those that we've already mentioned that help us do that. We also recognize that some of the most critical partners are here today, our students' families.
So I speak to you as a principal. I also speak to you as a community member, a mother of students that went through this school. I speak to the last two bullet points of our slide. We partner with our community helpers, including NCPD and Homeland Security to support our efforts. We are all in agreement that safety is a priority for our students, your children, and our staff members. It's our responsibility to partner with our community in that we work with Nassau County Police Department so that there are presents inside our building, outside our building, the Community Affairs, to invite them in, to talk about safety with our students. We've done this in the past, and we continue to do this for grade-level appropriate topics. We also have the Locust Valley Fire Department coming in regularly to talk to our students about safety, along with our teachers and our staff to emphasize, our guidance counselors about safety in our community. We also feel very strongly that we have an open dialogue with our parent council, that in order for us to go forward with any type of advancement or any adjustments, we need to have that open communication dialogue going. We take every situation seriously and follow up with strict protocol. Myself and the three gentlemen sitting next to me do our dual diligence pertaining to safety and also to the academic and social and emotional development of your children. We are proactive in every situation that comes before us. Our key elements as leaders are that we are visible, that we are throughout the building, throughout the recess yard, throughout the lunchroom. That our listening skills are on. We monitor things. We make sure we follow through. We make sure we get ahead of certain situations. If you asked us what we are non-negotiable about, it will be safety and safety first. Thank you.
So much, Mike, my colleague, Mrs. Riley. I speak to you as a community member and parent of three young boys in this district. If you came in late, my name is Michael Sestau, building principal at the middle school. You know, it's one thing to talk about what routinely is a 160-page, 170-page safety plan and document, but what does that really boil down to on a daily basis? And many of you would see that each morning as you arrive onto campus. And really, what I'm trying to get at is, what does that look like day-to-day? We live and breathe that and practice that each day, right? That starts at our arrival, our unified entrance and exit strategies. So from the moment, you might see your child step off on the curb at the middle school or high school, there is someone out there, right? There is someone out there greeting them, assessing who's coming in, looking and monitoring for the cars in the circle, looking to see if there's any visitors in the crowd. And that does happen, to be clear. People come up, not quite sure who they are. They're greeted, whether it's by me or one of my colleagues. They enter that vestibule, and both students, and this is important, our safety measures are ever-evolving. Our plans are ever-evolving. And so in the last few years, you'll see student IDs, staff IDs. Students now scan in upon arrival. Any visitor to the building scans in. They're vetted by four to five members of our staff in that vestibule booth, both monitors, deans, myself, the security guards. And that visitor management, like we said, is taken very seriously. We use our scholarship system to coordinate those efforts. And we use our lobby guard system, as many of you might know, coming to pick up your child to take them to a dentist appointment. It's very specific as to who you are. Are you on the list? Are you someone who's vetted to pick up your child if you're a grandparent, or an aunt, or a guardian? And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to some of my colleagues. Thank you.
Hello? Okay. So I want to speak to, throughout the year, the ongoing dialogue that we have with important stakeholders. We have weekly meetings with security. We discuss events. We discuss security needs. We discuss concerns. We review our practices and identify areas of improvement. In the high school, we have a bi-weekly PPS meeting, where it is the building principal, the other assistant principal, the head of guidance. Our four guidance counselors, our two psychologists, and our nurse. We meet. We discuss any academic, social, emotional concerns. We follow up. We review the data. The PPS team will evaluate and look at the strategies, if they're working, if they're not working, and then create another plan if they're unsuccessful. So we have ongoing communication and dialogue with important stakeholders within the school district.
We also plan an abundance of safety and emergency drills. And I know that from the high school perspective, a lot of our parents were notified of when our drills are going to be this year. We also discuss it in our grade-level meetings with our students. For example, the high school just held all of their grade-level meetings these last two days with our ninth-through-12th graders. And during those meetings, we discuss the importance of the safety drills and that they should be taking it seriously and following the leads of their teachers in an effort to make sure that they are prepared in the event of an emergency. And when we run a drill, like a lockdown drill, the admin team comes together to coordinate the drill, to put the drill into plan. And then afterwards, we get together and spend the time to discuss what went well, what we might have noticed, where can we improve? And that is a plan that has been in place for years here. So there is a reflection on the part of the administrators to make sure that the drills are successful and that we are doing everything that we can to ensure the safety of the students.
I just want to follow up from the high school lens. Patrick DeClemente, high school principal. I want to thank you for participating. And I also want to encourage you to encourage your high school students to participate in this discussion on safety and school culture as they move through the high school experience. As a father and a principal, there is no more important topic than the topic we're here for tonight. And we know that. I'd like to speak to some of the resources, some of the things that I consider are resources at Locust Valley High School. First and foremost, it's people. Dr. Turnow spoke to it a little bit, you know, in the opening. But for us, our key initiatives, our key attention to detail, feedback, how we know what to continue to do, what not to continue to do, is all based on people. Students, student leaders, quiet students who speak up, active students, a committed staff. Many of our staff members have been here for years. Many of our staff members live in the community or came from another community, and everyone brings a different lens. So our primary two groups of people that are first committing are students and staff members who are here every day for many hours. Many of the enhancements and the attention to upgrades, the concerns, come from people who often maybe aren't on campus all day long but are deeply invested. And that's our parent group, our Board of Education, and our broader community. Sometimes when you come to a building to drop a student off, you come to a night event, something just strikes you as, "This doesn't sit well." Or, "This is a really positive job to secure this campus." And we really appreciate the resource of people. Our students, our staff, our Board of Education, our families, our security team, and the broader community. We have a security team that I believe each year that I've been here has continued to grow in many different ways, to get stronger, to come together, to be cohesive, to join up in the mission and the initiatives that we have as a district, to become more and more familiar. I'm really proud of the work that we do among all the groups I just mentioned. And I'm especially proud of Mr. Sitko and our security team across the district, and especially on the high school campus. One of the things that we're deeply, deeply proud of and that we consider very fragile is our relationship with professionals in the field of safety. And when I say that, I mean specifically the second precinct, the Office of Homeland, the Community Affairs Division, and the Problem Oriented Police Division. Many of us sitting here know them by first name. We consider them friends, but they're not friends. They're colleagues in our work together to make sure that the number-one priority of safety is taken care of. We know that before a student can feel good about his or her experience, a student needs to feel safe. And when we have an issue, when we have something that comes up that we're addressing, we feel the change. We feel it from parents, and we feel it from students. And just like you, we understand that. And it's our job to be responsive. At the same time, when things are fairly quiet and spirit is high, and everyone's tuned in academically and socially, we know that we're at our best. So tonight, one of the efforts, and one of the things that I hope to accomplish, whether it's tonight or in a follow-up coffee with the principal meeting, but one thing that I think we all share in is that we want you to feel confident, because we are very tuned in to all of the elements of our work, but safety is number one. I do want to point out, and the expert is on the other end of the table, Mr. N., Eric. Eric, I'm pretty experienced in education. And I really want to thank Eric and my close colleague here in the building, Mr. Al Wheeler. Those two individuals, they're what I consider initiators and people who get the job done. And every time I turn around, when I see Eric or I see Al, they're improving this campus. And you know that better than I do if you've been around this building or in this district for a while. But they constantly improve this building aesthetically, from an indoor and outdoor campus feel, and from a safety point of view. So I want to point out a few things that aren't commonplace across all districts. When I think about the upgrades to safety, I think about red door straps that are on some of the pushbars, so that it's a quick way for a student or a staff member or a community member to just lock the door. Red door straps. I think about swipe access into certain doors so that you don't have to use a traditional key. I think about a lockdown hot button that gives a school principal, or an assistant principal, or a guidance counselor, or a seventh grader or a 10th grade student the ability to put the building in lockdown without discussion or without a phone call to the office. When I arrived, I think years ago, there was just like the completion of what's called the vestibule or the main entrance. It was a beautiful main entrance, and I knew it was beautiful. And they said, "But Patrick, we're actually redoing the pavers and the concrete." So I think, right from the start for me, we were always improving the facility in terms of safety. We're one of the few buildings that, when the alarm goes off to trigger an evacuation drill, there's also an audible sound. And then shortly after, we moved to an audible sound that said "lockdown," or "fire," or "evacuation." We also moved towards a visual. So for instance, above my head and in a lot of the areas of the building, you'll see yellow and blue strobes. So if our band or our all-state musicians are playing, and the music and the tone is loud, the visual will signal that there's a need to stop what you're doing and listen. Those are some of the upgrades. One of the, one or two of the features that we've come to use most in the high school is the access to two really sophisticated platforms. Our Verkata camera platform, and also our PA platform, where we have the ability remotely, from a web-based format, to play student music over the intercom, to signal emergency sounds and tones or commands. And we also have the ability to go back in time and to record things from history that may have happened that we want to have a visual, or we may want to save some footage from. Lastly, just to point out two more things. We're all connected to the Rave app. And I also am really proud. I don't think there's another school campus who has signs that are more beautiful than ours. So I love the green and gold signage that's on our campus. And we also balance that with some very industrial-looking but very important signs that all work towards safety and an appropriate flow of people, either on foot or on car. So let me just summarize by saying, we're constantly looking to improve. I work with a dynamite group of people. And when I say that, I'm talking about my colleagues, but also in this community. When we bring 1,200 to 1,400 people here every day, we know that it's safe. Otherwise, we would be acting on it, or we shouldn't be here. We're proud of the work that we do. We bring in professionals to do walkthroughs. We did that at the end of the year so that we can commit to summer work that was recommended. And then we did that to start up the year. We call that an audit or a walkthrough. We've gone through audits, walkthroughs, professional support. I think as recent as 20, just yesterday, we actually brought in a professional from the community and said, "Hey, what do you think? Can you just give us some feedback?" So we want to continue that flow of dialogue. This venue is important for all of us. But I do, as the high school principal, want to invite you to come once a month. We serve coffee, and we have conversation for about an hour or two. And it's a good opportunity for high school parents or anyone in the community to come in and get some specific answers and share some recommendations about this campus. Thank you.
Just to piggyback on what Mr. DeClemente said, one of the hugest positives we have is a fantastic security team that we rely on heavily. Ms. Massa, when she spoke a few minutes ago, spoke about our regular meetings with our security staff, our team of deans, our school-related personnel that we're constantly working with to structure our supervision approach. We regularly are looking at where our staff is positioned, how we're utilizing our staff, how we can have the best views on the activities going on in the building both before and after school. And we're constantly having dialogue, like Mr. DeClemente said, about how we can improve our practice and adjusting our personnel to meet the needs of the kids to make sure we have the best visuals on situations that are happening around our campus.
Thank you to the building leadership in the middle school and the high school, specifically. I'm going to transition a little bit into discussing more specifically what we do as a PPS team here. So we have our counselors and our psychologists throughout the district. They're housed in all of our buildings, our elementary, intermediate spaces, as well as our middle school and high school campus. As the school year starts, they are working from the get-go to build relationships with the students in the buildings. And they do that in many different ways. Of course, not only just being present and being in the hallways, learning all of our students' names, but through the lessons that they are pushing into classrooms to teach. Some of the topics that they focus on when they are teaching those lessons focus on building relationships, building a sense of responsibility for yourself and the responsibility that you have towards others, as well as decision-making. Not only do they push into classrooms, but throughout the course of the school year, they will invite students to come in and meet with them on a more individual basis so that they can discuss goal-setting in addition to following up on any issues that might arise. Not only in some of those PPS meetings that Ms. Massa mentioned earlier, but just things that they might witness themselves in the hallway or that a teacher might come and report to them. Then they have the opportunity, and they take that opportunity to have those more individual, deeper conversations with our students. They really also, something else that's super important to note is that our counselors and psychologists work really closely with not only the teachers, but also the administrators. So there is constant communication between each of those constituents so that we have a really clear picture of who all of our students are and so that we can really help build them into the individuals that they are becoming as they move through the course of each school year. We do have a formal process for our staff to share information with our PPS team, especially if they're recognizing that our students need some help, whether it's academic, or if it's social, or if it's an emotional endeavor that is something that we could provide support with. Really open line of communication, not only within the building, but these conversations also help us build those lines of communication with our families, which is, of course, really tantamount. One other thing that I think would be important, and I will pass it off to my colleague here, is that in those conversations and in those relationships that we build with our families, we also have that opportunity to share referrals with outside supports that would be important and necessary for our students who might be in... and necessary for our students who might be in that space where they could benefit from something that would be a little bit more therapeutic. And I think that Dr. Kavellis will speak to that a little bit more specifically.
So as my colleagues have all shared, there are many opportunities for information sharing within the school building, both formal and informal. But I have to say, most frequently, it could just be something as simple as the teacher hearing something and going to the school psychologist or the counselor and saying, "I'm concerned about ex-student today. This is what I heard." Or perhaps another student hearing something or being worried about a friend or a peer and going to their counselor. In every one of those situations, our staff follows up. You know, especially when the concern may be that a student is indicating that they may be posing or having thoughts or talking about harming themselves or others. In every one of these situations, what we would call a risk assessment would be conducted. That's always done by a mental health team. It's never done by just one person. It is usually the school psychologist in partnership with either a counselor, an administrator is present in order to assess. That usually involves a structured interview, always the involvement of parents. And the goal is always to make a determination about what kind of care that child may need, whether that is making sure they get the mental health support that they need right away by going to an emergency room or contacting law enforcement, which has occurred. I think it's important to note that, again, this doesn't happen with one individual and none of us work in silos. It's important to have communication open and ongoing. There are instances where we may have concerns about students that are not in the building. So in those cases, our teams do go out and do home visits, whether that's because they're concerned about the student themselves, because they're hearing that that student might be in distress, or concerned about safety of others. Again, it's a situation, it's situation by situation. It's a decision that's not made by one person or conducted by one person. And the decision is made at that point whether it would be deemed that we would need to have other support like law enforcement or security, but it's never something that's just left not followed up on. Overall, again, like I said, communication for us is key. We, in addition to home visits, we make sure that our counselors, our psychologists, they're always working with outside professionals. We have many students that are involved in therapy on the outside. We make it our priority to try to have communication with those individuals and have consent from parents to speak with them. You know, really, actually, first and foremost, from a therapeutic standpoint, it makes sense because it provides consistency to the child. So if there's a child who's, for example, dealing with anxiety, if there are issues that a child is working on or strategies that they have that they're working on in therapy, it helps to be able to use the same strategies at school for consistency's sake. It helps students. Other instances where we have medical professionals that we're in communication with, or perhaps CPS even, if there's situations that we're concerned about, we are mandated reporters. There are some students who, in extreme situations, the courts are involved. And so our staff is in communication with them and making sure that everything is followed as it should be or as dictated by the courts. So these are not, these are not systems that are in place that are just haphazard. Our staff are trained. They go to training on a yearly basis. Just last year, we had many of our mental health team attend training on doing risk and threat assessments. And every year, we kind of take a survey and we regroup and we make sure that those new individuals will also be trained. Or if there's somebody who hasn't been trained in a while, we'll go back and do it again. So we're always looking to improve in that respect.
So the district takes a multi-tiered approach to security. We utilize some technologies, policies, and procedures that we've implemented along with a strong collaboration between district employees and subject matter experts. The following are some of the physical and technological security measures that we've taken. As Mr. DiClemente had spoken about, the Rave application is a panic button system that can be utilized in the case of an emergency. The app is installed in the cell phones of all administrators, select staff members, security guards, and custodial staff. When activated, the Rave app connects directly to 911. The dispatcher will then instantly and simultaneously send patrol units and surrounding police departments to the location where the alert was had. This is known because the app is geofenced, so it knows exactly where it went off. The system also calls 911 so that the individual can speak directly to an operator who is trained on the app. This allows the person, if they're able to, to speak directly as to what is happening. The Rave app is tested annually with the Nassau County Police Department. The test is conducted to ensure that users know how to utilize the system and that the geofence location is working and that the 911 operator can both send and receive messages. To be clear, this system does not activate any of the audible alarms within our buildings. However, this is something that we are working on with our vendors and we hope that we can make this happen in the future. We do, however, have hardwired panic buttons in all the buildings, which are located in numerous locations. If to press these buttons, will instantly activate the audible alarms throughout the building, instructing everyone to lockdown. It will notify central station and will deactivate all the card readers in the building, preventing access through the building. In addition, if any call to 911 is made in the district from a district phone, there's an automatic alert that is sent to all administrators stating that a call was made from that number. As also as Mr. DiClemente said, in 2021, we implemented the Verkata security system, or many aspects of it anyway. We installed 407 new security cameras throughout the district. And we installed 48 card readers throughout the districts at main entrances and entrances around the buildings. All staff are now required to wear their IDs during the day due to this. We've also implementing new Verkata lockdown systems, which will supplement the existing systems that we have currently. And finally, we are going to be implementing the new Verkata visitor management system in each building in the near future. I'll now briefly discuss some of our security policies and procedures. Our district policy is to keep all exterior doors locked at all times. This is probably one of the most important elements of security as it keeps the potential threat out of the building in the first place. Doors are not to be propped or chocked open at any time. Teachers and staff have keys to their classrooms for lockdowns and to lock the door when exiting their classroom. This is an area that the district intends to explore further in the near future. All staff is trained in their building, by their building principals, on their building-level safety plans by September 15th each year. These plans are confidential and the training focuses on the key aspects of both the district-wide and building-level safety plans, as well as mental health training and violence prevention. The district utilizes Arrow Security for our security services. Currently, we have numerous ex-law enforcement officers, ex-correction officers, ex-military, ex-fire departments within our ranks. And as we replace these guards, we try to replace them with individuals of the same type of backgrounds. Our guards monitor and evaluate the interior and exterior of our buildings and properties throughout the day when students are present, and they ensure a safe and secure environment for all our staff and students. Finally, one of the most important things that I think we have is the close collaboration with the Nassau County Police Department and the Department of Homeland Security. The district has direct contacts in both of those departments, and we are able to call when any incident or potential incident presents itself. We are also provided with clear guidance and we adhere to that guidance at all times that we are, when we are given it. To this point, we often invite them to our campuses to do audits, as Mr. DiClemente said, and they will actually be in our building, but probably the next week or so, inside and out, helping us out. As part of the district's commitment to safety and security, we meet as committees throughout the year on both the building level and district level to discuss potential security assessments, upgrades, and enhancements that can be made. Some of the topics that we discuss are the security camera enhancements, movements of cameras or additions of cameras, exterior door access control system additions, upgrades to interior doors where needed, assessment of interior access control hardware and electronic door hardware. And we are always continuing to evaluate our security personnel and determining how to best utilize them and if more guards are needed. We discuss perimeter hardening and we update our security plans on a regular. Thank you. I'll now turn it back over to Dr. Ternau.
Thank you. So just some of my final thoughts. And as you can hear, just from the discussion of my colleagues to the right yesterday, like Mr. DiClemente said, we had one of our local authorities come in and really just speak to us about what can we do better? We are constantly criticizing ourselves on what we can do to make our schools safer. From the superintendent's perspective, I just want to let you know more of a global perspective. So the Executive Superintendent Leadership Committee is meeting this week to prepare for the Nassau County Superintendent Meeting on September 18th. And fortunately, there is a very increased uptake in all of our school districts. We are absolutely concerned. And the superintendents do get together once a month as a whole group in Nassau County and bi-weekly, and then the other two weeks, we meet with our quadrant. So I'll meet with our local partners like Glencov, Oyster Bay, Sayosset, et cetera, Hicksville even, so we can get a better understanding of what's happening in our local area as well. And also, we learn from each other. Our PPS team and school leaders continue to attend local workshops, conferences on supporting mental health challenges. I think all of us are aware that over the last really five years, we've seen many of our rates increase, unfortunately, especially in our youth. Our teachers and school leaders will not allow, a lot of people ask zero tolerance. So no jokes, no pranks, or veiled threats to occur in our school classrooms or on our school grounds. We will discipline accordingly as we move forward to develop the hearts and minds of our young people and our community. We will not be derailed with our overall mission and vision to provide our students with a safe and academically rigorous program where rich opportunities such as arts, music, sports, and extracurricular activities are offered to our students to be successful. I did want to show you, this is on our website, so sometimes people ask, and this is something the Board of Education has worked really hard to help me implement, is these are the individuals sitting before you and who responds to who. So if you're in question, this is a great organizational chart, as well as who do I call? So many times, people will call perhaps my office. And my secretary will try to lead them back to the appropriate personnel who can really answer their question in real time. So please, again, this is on our website. If you wonder who you should speak to, perhaps your child is a middle school student. Might be a good idea to talk to the school counselor because the school counselor works with all the teachers in coordination with your child. So sometimes, this can be very helpful to parents to understand how each building is set up. Recently, you know, what has been addressed in your school this year? As you know, this is my second year as your superintendent of schools. One thing that we felt really strongly about last year, the Board of Education and the school leaders, as well as our teachers, came forward and said, "Cellular phones are more than just a distraction, right? Unfortunately, all of our children are walking around with a computer." Now, most of you as parents, and I told you I'm one, I'm a grandma, we want to be able to contact our children. We want our kids to go out and play and maybe they need to call us and say, "Hey, can you come pick me up at the field?" That's normal, right? Maybe they throw us a text. But right now, our students are walking around with a computer where they can access absolutely everything. And we have to ask ourselves, are they really ready for that? Is that something that's developmentally appropriate? Because we all know that we're not allowed to drink until we're 21 because our frontal cortex is not fully developed. Our car insurance doesn't go down until we're 25 because then they know it finally is completely closed. This is all based on research. So we're not really acting in accordance when we let our youngsters have the whole world at their hands because they're not ready for it yet. And as adults, we need to protect our children. So this is something that we firmly believe in. Last year, Mr. DiClemente and Mr. Sisaro did a Board of Education presentation with the help of their two deans, as well as their assistant principals and all the personnel in our schools. They saw there was definitely a decrease in inappropriate behavior, a decrease in bullying. And these are things that we want to see. We want to see our children actively engaged with each other. We want them to be social, but we also want them to be kind and caring. We don't want them staring down at their phone and not having human interaction, which is what they should. So you will see that I was recently interviewed, only a week ago, by the local Herald, and we made the front page because of our cellphone policy. We've also been asked to present at the New York State School Board Association on October 22nd, I believe it is. And I think what, just so all of you know, your entire Board of Education is going to be there. So this is not about one or two of us. This is about all of us. We're working really hard to make sure that we do right by all the children in the school district. And as some of you might have heard, even our governor now is looking at considering banning cellphones completely in school districts. And this is based on all the research that's been coming out. You've heard from our staff, one thing that I wanted to mention is we have eliminated basically people that don't have any right to be on our school grounds. We don't need Uber Eats here. We don't need DoorDash. We don't know who those people are. We have no idea who they are and we don't need them on our schools. We have an unbelievable food service. The food that we make here is unbelievable. Today, we had training for observing teachers and we had a beautiful lunch supplied right from our own cafeteria. So we're speaking from ourselves. We eat it all the time. It's remarkable. We do have a posted security card as you come in. As many of you know, at the middle school, high school, typically Richie's out there. He says, "Hi, how are you? How come you're here?" We want to know why you're here. We want to make sure that we're vetting people before they have access to the front of our building. He did get a new car, I noticed. It says Arrow on the side. Like Mr. DiClemente, Mr. Sisaro, and of course, Mr. N., Notice Scholarship, this is, as you know, all of us walk in to different, whether it's a doctor's office, everyone wears a name tag. People have swipe cards in almost every industry now. So we're just preparing our children for the workforce, but also, we're preparing them to be safe. So when our students are now entering this year, they're swiping in. And that helps us know if we have students that are missing really quick because it's going through the database, which in our system, it's e-school, our student management system, and we can run reports to know if kids are not here. And that lets this administrative group know if we need to be concerned. If we start to see a pattern, as Mrs. Kavellis and Mrs. Zorneski described to you, we start to look at those patterns. We gather data at many different points to make sure that we understand every child that's in our schoolhouse. And then, I told you about that, okay? Then another thing that we've done, and this is something that we're growing in. So here's an area that we recognize we were weak in last year, okay? And we're improving it. Our communication. So we had an older program called Aptigee. That's what's been communicating with you. Through hard work and speaking with other school districts, we are going to be adopting Parent Square tomorrow night at the Board of Education meeting. We're going to go into it much deeper. Mr. Ken Packard and Mrs. Anne Marie Bonaspena will be presenting on that. But just in overall, just so you know, by November 1st, all the administrators are going to be trained on using this program. It provides text messages, emails, or voice messaging. All of you last night heard my voice. As you know, that's not very common and it's not an easy step. I have to work with the tech department to even do that. This is something that is extremely quick and is efficient and can get messages to our families much, much sooner than in the past. We're going to be starting training with our parents by December, so you're all going to receive training at different venues. By January, we will be fully implemented and our schoolteachers will not be using other communication devices such as like Remind Me. They will all be using Parent Square. And also with Parent Square, it swiftly again. Mass notifications are extremely swift. And what's nice about it is that it will automatically translate in over 100 languages for anyone. translate in over 100 languages for anyone. Something that I wanted to share with you, on September 3rd, which was the Superintendent's Conference Day, our opening day with our faculty, we watched this video by Simon Sinek, and we also spoke about the other experts. So, again, this is something that we've been discussing, going to mental health workshops, speaking to teachers about this, examining the CDC/CDS report on mental health crisis and where we come in. Some of the books that people are reading, The Anxious Generation, I'm sure many of you have heard about. A lot of us went to the conference, and actually, some of our board members, as well as parent council members, went to go see Over the Influence: Why Social Media is Toxic for Women and Girls and How We Can Take It Back. And there's another book written by American Girls where they follow 250 girls, it's a case study for one year, and see the detrimental effects that it has, especially on females when it comes to social media. So, this is something we're very finely in tune with, this is something we continue to develop, because we want to help our students. And then, I'm going to introduce to you some of the questions, the remaining questions that families ask to me, were more of a school attorney background. So, we've invited Steve Gutstad with us, he's to my left, and he's going to come up here and just take us through a couple of slides.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Gutstad, I'm a partner at Ingraham &amp; Smith, we represent the Locust Valley School District. Just before I get started into my little portion of this presentation, I just want to say, I'm not speaking about specific students, I'm not asking about, answering questions about specific students, nothing that I'm speaking about is relating to any specific situation or specific student. I'm talking generally about the school district's code of conduct, school district rules, and the student discipline process on a general level. So, you know, I know I wasn't here for most of the presentation, but I know a majority of this presentation today is about how to keep the kids of Locust Valley safe, and you know, I appreciate that. We spoke a lot about, they spoke a lot about the SAVE Act and District-wide Safety Plan. Another thing that came out of the SAVE Act was the Code of Conduct. The Code of Conduct is, if you look on your website, Board Policy 5300, it's a comprehensive document which talks about what's the acceptable code of conduct for your students, your staff, your visitors, anyone who steps forth on school district property, and if the Code of Conduct is violated, what are the appropriate consequences? Now, this first slide right here is important, is actually the introduction to the Code of Conduct, and it's important, because it showcases what is important to the Board of Education of the Locust Valley School District. The Board of Education of the Locust Valley School District is committed to providing a safe and orderly school environment where students may receive and district personnel may deliver quality educational services without disruption or interference. Responsible behavior by students, teachers, other district personnel, parents, and other visitors is essential to achieving this goal. You know, you parents, you have your students come here, you want to make sure that your students are safe. And this Code of Conduct is a part of the process, along with everything else that was discussed tonight, to keeping your students safe as they, when they step foot, when they leave you guys in the morning, and before they come back to you in the evening. And it's very important that the school district does care, and the school district goes to make this code based on the principles of civility, mutual respect, citizenship, character, tolerance, honesty, and integrity. Now, your Code of Conduct has eight general themes of violations, what is not acceptable conduct in the school day. It ranges from insubordination, plagiarism, cheating, but the general, the general one that we've seen a lot is endangers the health and safety of themselves and/or others. That's the general violation that we see a lot of, when it comes to student discipline issues, what's the biggest violation of the Code of Conduct? Now, when a student is, when there are potential, when a student violates the Code of Conduct, they are subject to discipline, as set forth in the code. There are, there's detention, there is removal, but generally speaking, when we talk about student discipline, we're talking about suspension. Now, I'm here, I'm an attorney, so I'm going to talk to you about the law for five seconds, because that's what I'm here for. The general provision for suspensions, Education Law 3214, that is the student discipline provision of the education law. Again, school districts are creatures of statute, which means they have to comply with what's in the education law. Now, in the education law, really, the only punishment in a student discipline proceeding, which, and again, we'll talk about the proceeding in a second, is suspension. The burden of proof that the school district has to prove is whether or not there is some competent and substantial evidence that there was a violation of the Code of Conduct, and what does that mean? It really just means more likely than not. It's just a very fancy way of saying, isn't more likely than not that the student violated the Code of Conduct? You know, the school district, before they go into this process, they conduct investigations, they look into the facts, they're not going after students just for the sake of going after students. There is concrete evidence before they go forth. Now, generally speaking, it's not in the slides, but there are two different types of suspensions. The first suspension is known as the principal suspension, and why is it called the principal suspension? Because it's issued by the principal. It is a suspension of up to five days. The principal cannot suspend for more than five days. So, if you hear about a student being suspended for five days, that's a principal suspension. And what happens in that, it's the principal sends a letter saying Johnny has been accused of violating the Code of Conduct and that he did X. You have the ability to come in and have an informal conference with the principal. You meet with the principal, and then the principal makes a determination as to whether the suspension stands. And again, the principal can only suspend for up to five days. If the suspension is for longer than five days, and yes, suspensions can go for longer than five days, it has to be through what's known as a superintendent's hearing. So, the superintendent, or technically, the Board of Education, has the ability to prefer charges against the student. Generally speaking, I have never seen a Board of Education do it, but the superintendent is the one that normally issues a superintendent's hearing. The superintendent has a hearing officer, the hearing officer hears the facts, and makes a report and recommendation to the superintendent for consideration. And again, the standard, the burden of proof, it must be based on competent and substantial evidence that the student participated in the objectional conduct. Now, let's say the student is found guilty, or admits to it, pleads guilty, again, that happens. In the event the student is guilty, if this is right from your Code of Conduct, but it's also based from commissioner, it's also based from commissioner decisions, there are six different factors that are considered into what is the appropriate sanction. It's the student's age, the nature of the offense, and the circumstances that led to the offense, the student's prior disciplinary record, otherwise known as an anecdotal record, the effectiveness of other forms of discipline, information from parents, teachers, and/or others as appropriate, and other extenuating circumstances. That's basically the catch-all and the way that we can say we consider everything. But, most importantly, it's the student's age. I mean, for example, a fourth grader is not going to get suspended for the same infraction as a 12th grader. Fourth graders, you know, as Dr. Turnout was just talking about, you know, when it comes to car insurance, you have, you get deductions until you're 25, the brain's not fully developed. In fourth grade, you might not know and have the same life experience as that of a 12th grader. Also, the nature of the offense, you're not going to punish somebody who was, who talked back to a teacher versus someone who threw a punch. Again, there's a lot of differences, and all those things are under, always under consideration in the process of a student discipline hearing. Now, again, as I said before, under Education Law 3214, if this goes to a superintendent's hearing, the only possible outcome without the acquiescence of the parent is suspension. I know that there is a lot of discussion, most recently, in the legislature, in the Assembly regarding trying to modify Education Law 3214, adding restorative practices, mandated counseling, mandated psychiatric examinations, the sort, that's not in effect. What we have today, the only acceptable, the only possible consequence from a student discipline hearing is that a suspension. I know there have been talks regarding expulsion, that's actually known as a permanent suspension. That's only used in very rare circumstances, and the standard for permanent suspension is to be applied in extraordinary circumstances where the student shows an alarming disregard for the safety of others, and where it is necessary to safeguard other students. That sounds like it makes, that's pretty clear-cut, but there are plenty of commissioner decisions regarding permanent suspensions that are all over the place regarding what is and what's not an alarming disregard for the safety of others. The most recent case involving, involving permanent suspension was a case in about 2019 in which a kid repeatedly hacked into other students' emails and was creating fake notifications of terrorist attacks. The kid was arrested, the kid was, the kid was an 11th grader, he was, he had a permanent suspension, and the commissioner said, "That is an alarming disregard for the safety of others." A kid who basically burnt down his high school was found to have an alarming disregard for the safety of others. It's a case-by-case basis, it's not a bright-line rule, it's very fact-specific. But generally speaking, as we've seen with this commissioner of education, permanent suspensions is not something that she, that she really likes to, likes to instill on students. She has, she put out a memo last year regarding more inclusionary discipline as opposed to exclusionary, such as suspension. But now, what happens if a student is suspended, the parents don't like what the suspension was issued? Student discipline appeals are brought to the Board of Education. The Board of Education reviews the record and makes a determination as to whether to uphold or to overturn the suspension. Assuming that this Board of Education upholds the suspension issued by the superintendent, then it would go to the Commissioner of Education. The Commissioner of Education reviews the entirety of the record, the transcripts, the decision from the superintendent, the decision from the board, and the standard that they use is that if it shocks the conscience, as to warrant substitution of the commissioners of education's judgment. There was a case last year in the neighboring Nassau County District in which a student was suspended for six months for allowing other students to come into the school building. The kid admitted to it, and in overturning the suspension, the Commissioner of Education held that it shocked the sense of fairness, that that kid should not have been suspended for six months for that offense, even though he let students, or let non-students into the school building and overturned that suspension in its entirety, allowing the kid to only be suspended for a period of five days. So, again, I don't agree with that fact pattern, I don't agree with the commissioner's decision in that case, but unfortunately, the Commissioner of Education is the final arbiter on these types of cases, and we're stuck at the beck and call. But again, as I said to you before, very rarely has the Commissioner of Education upheld permanent suspensions from school, and again, not every case is the same. It's a very fact-specific analysis in which you might see it in one case, but it might be completely different even with the same fact pattern later on. I understand, trust me, I'm a parent of two young girls who go to, who are in elementary school in a different district, and I, trust me, I understand the concerns that you all have regarding how to make sure that your kids are safe when they go to school every day. But you know, you've heard tonight from your, from all these people, and I'll let Dr. Turnout close, or whoever's going to close in a few seconds, but you've heard everything today about the SAVE Act and everything that's been put in place in order to protect your students while they are here on a daily basis. And you know, there is a process. If a kid violates the Code of Conduct, there is a disciplinary proceeding, there are consequences, and the school district continues to help move this district forward as we, as it goes. I mean, things happen on a daily basis, and the district is readily prepared to ensure that happens. So, with that, I will turn it back over.
First and foremost, I just want to say thank you for everyone that came this evening, anyone that's listening to this. This is something that we're in together. The safety and welfare of our children are our number-one priority. You have to feel safe in order to learn. And when I sit here and I really listen, and even for me, it's a great exercise, as many conversations as I have with everyone sitting to my right, I can hear, and I hope you can hear, the honesty, the sincerity, and the love and the passion they have for this community and for the children that we serve. And I hope that you understand that every day that we come in, we try our best, and yes, we're people. Sometimes, we may not appear to do something as quickly as perhaps someone could say that we didn't. We are working as fast as we can. Many times, we have to stop, we have to pause, because we need to gather more information from more people. So, why things seem very linear? When I showed you one of the slides even from the state, there is no linear, because we're getting information from sometimes a very wide range of sources. So, we're trying to accumulate that, and we're doing our fact-finding. So, parents may send us something, and we continue to say, "Please send it, please send it," but we may not be able to get back to you right away, because we're probably deep inside an investigation, and we're all working with each other at different levels. We're also working with our local agencies, you know, especially our police departments, Homeland Security, and many times, we have to wait for them to also get back to us, because sometimes, they come forward with additional information that the school does not know. So, just as we move forward as a community, as we continue, unfortunately, we know that this, the last two incidents that we had last week will not be the last, but we have to learn from this, and we have to learn to move forward. We have to learn to continue to say positive thoughts to our students and let them know that we care and that we try our best every day, but we also implore all of you to do what you can, and part of that is really helping us with that social media piece. So, if you can, as a parent, help us by really looking at what your kids are doing, we're hoping, I'm hoping, for a future where kids go back to just regular phones. You know, I have two older children that didn't get a phone until they drove, and there was no social media. In fact, I used to beg them to make very small text messages to me, because it was super expensive, and you paid for every single dash or dot. Now, my next two set of kids, I did make them wait, there was no such thing as wait till eighth, to eighth grade, however, I did that. My one, Jack, was, he's now 22, is in ninth grade, and my son Harrison was in eighth. He's 20 years old, because I firmly believed that I was handing them the whole world and that I couldn't control it. One of the videos that we showed our staff members, in it, Simon Sinek, if you get a chance to watch it, he says, "Would you ever leave your liquor cabinet open in your house? These are highly addictive tools, and kids do not have the capacity to always make good decisions." The best of parents in my, gosh, 23 years as a school administrator, the best of people have come to me and said, "I can't believe that my child did that," and it's heartbreaking, because they really didn't, and their child's not a bad kid either, sometimes, they just really make mistakes. Sometimes, kids are intentional, and that's our responsibility, and we will do what we need to do to make sure our schools are safe. So, I want you to feel confident with that, because as you can see, as I believe we demonstrated with the personnel, that we do investigate, we thoroughly talk to our children, and we have open lines of communication, whether they're teaching assistants, custodians, bus drivers. People see things, or they see students sometimes in different areas, or in different, we'll just say, environments, and those reports come back to us, and they help us act on it. If you have, I know that the presidential debate is tonight at 9 o'clock, we, I did not know that when I scheduled this, so my apologies, I wasn't even thinking that far. I was thinking about answering all the questions that came into us, I wanted to make sure that, I kind of checked everything off, but your building leadership are your first people to go to, so if you have a specific question about facilities or security that you heard Mr. N. talk about, you can please send him an email. If you have a question about something that's happening in your schoolhouse, I would implore you to reach out to your building leadership, they will be more than happy to tell you. And we're always here for you, so please continue to communicate. I wish that we had Parent Square right now, but we have to do things correctly, and sometimes that takes time. And again, please go on your e-school account, please make sure that when you're on your parent portal, it's updated correctly, so we can push out significant notifications to you. I hope you all have a lovely evening. If there's something we didn't answer, again, please do reach out to us on a personal level, and we'll be more than happy to answer that for you. you. I hope you all have a lovely evening. If there's something we didn't answer, again, please do reach out to us on a personal level, and we'll be more than happy to answer that for you.